I'd like to call the City Council workshop for the city of Lake City for April the 11th, 20, 23 to order. Ms. Seidman, you can call the room, please.
Mr. Jernigan?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Tansson?
Here.
Mayor Witt?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Chief Butler?
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Lake City Council has opened this public meeting. Since 1968, the city council has prohibited any person from making personal or pertinent slander if their marks are becoming voters by addressing the city council. Yelling or making outward comments in the name of its constitutional rights is found. Such contact will not be tolerated. As on a one-prove manner of addressing the city council, that is to be recognized and speak for the party, as a reminder to persons of not to openly carry a handgun or carry a concealed weapon or firearm by the governing body's lead. The first, and I'll add a question tonight, a redistricting proposal. And we have Mr. Kirk Spencer, A.S., here. Mr. [inaudible].
I might have to turn on the... It is. It is. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Council members of the [inaudible] this evening. Tonight, I want to go through a little PowerPoint, and then we'll talk about some of the alternative draft maps.
[inaudible].
I'll jump into the software to show you how that works. A little bit about us. We've been... We were incorporated in 1989. It's exclusively a local government consulting firm. And as far as redistricting is concerned, we've been involved with maybe 30, 35 different projects over the past 20 years or so. So with that, I think you've had a copy of this PowerPoint. But talk a little bit about the redistricting criteria first. The redistricting, it's not reapportionment. Redistricting is realigning the districts of the governing body, whether it's the city and county, the legislature. So the districts are roughly equal in population. Reapportionment is when Congress real allocates the number of congressional seats to each state based on an updated census. Florida, I think, gained one or two seats after this last census was taken. Why are we doing this? It's required by your charter. But also, it furthers the principle of one person, one vote, and it furthers the equal protections clause, the Voting Rights Amendment, and the Voting Rights Act that Congress passed many years ago. I mentioned there are some guidelines, there are general guidelines for redistricting at any level of government. These are all considered in total, these guidelines. But there is a dominant criteria, and that is population. And the population of each district should be, in a perfect world, as close as they can be to the other districts as possible. But we also follow these other criteria at the same time. So, population. It's impossible to get districts that are exactly the same in terms of numbers of people. We try to get them as close to the average or the ideal size as is possible. Generally speaking, a plan where an individual district or districts is not, are not more than 3% over or under the average, that's pretty good. And if there's one that was 3% under, 3% over, that's a spread of six points. That's a decent target to try to get to, recognizing that there are other criteria. Population is total numbers of people. It's not registered voters. It's the total number of people that were counted by the Bureau of the Census. If there's a deviation of more than 10 points, that tends to raise a red flag with the course. There are instances when you can exceed the 10-point threshold, but generally, you try to keep it under. So here, in this example, this is from, I think this was Jefferson County about 10 years ago. The largest district is about 5.4% over. The smallest is about 7.4% under. So that's a spread of over 12 points, almost 13 points. That's more than 10 points. And so Jefferson County redistricted to get these deviations closer to each other. Second criteria, we avoid plans that dilute minority voting strength. And there are two ways that that is done: packing and cracking. Packing is when you locate most of the minority population in one district so as to dilute influence in a different district or districts. Cracking is when you split that population so as to dilute the influence of that population in all of the districts within the city. So you try not to divide and try not to pack folks who are covered by the Voting Rights Act. We use census blocks. Census blocks are readily available. They are the smallest unit of information that comes down from the Bureau of the Census. It contains all sorts of data in each census block: the number of people, their race, their age, ethnicity, things like that. If this was six years from now, like, you know, if we're towards the end of this decade and you were in the redistricting process for some reason, you might want to think about supplementing the census data from 2020 with other information. But since we're so close to the census now, this data is presumed to be correct. And we've been involved with other places that were nine years out, and they use the census data from the previous census. So we use, the census data is presumed to be correct. Other criteria are sort of common sense sorts of things to make the districts easy to understand for the electors. We follow existing boundaries of the existing districts when we can. We try to follow major roads or significant natural features of a water body, a stream, a creek, that sort of thing. It's easy to understand for the voters. It's less disruptive to voting precincts. And it's usually, not always, but usually coterminous with census blocks. Criteria must be contiguous. Contiguity can be attained by crossing a water body. Then you attempt to keep communities of interest together: neighborhoods, homeowners' associations. And you avoid districts with so-called bizarre shapes. This, if you all have heard of Jerry Banter, you know, this is, they come from Governor of Massachusetts when he drew this particular district, and someone said, "Well, that's looks like a salamander." Well, it's not a salamander, it's a Jerry Banter. This is a North Carolina case, 1993 congressional district. This is what it looks at without the rest of the state. And this was thrown out of court as well in 1993. So you avoid districts with bizarre shapes. These criteria are considered in total. They're balanced against each other. It's impossible to have a plan where you retain all of the criteria to the greatest extent possible, so we do the best we can. We balance criteria against each other with population being the dominant criteria. So we prepared just two draft alternatives to consider. And we try to follow the criteria that we just mentioned to the best we can. This is the, this is your existing district with the 2020 population data in there. And remember, I mentioned the 10-point general threshold. You're at almost 45 points of a spread, so it's way off. And so you have to align these boundaries so that these, the spread at least comes down to something less than 10, 10 points. But here, you can see where District Number 10 needs to gain about 500 people. District 12 is about 100 over, but District 12, we would recommend that that remain unchanged. And we'll talk about that in a couple minutes. District 13 needs to lose about 850, and District 14 needs to gain about 450 people. These are the current districts. And so of the two plans, they both had some things in common. First, this is Highway 90, and if we leave District 12 untouched, you can follow this really nice, easily understood boundary here. And then I think this is Main Street that goes up here. So that, that's a great boundary between two different districts. I mean, if we leave District 12 untouched, then District 12 is not way far overpopulated. Secondly, both plans bring this area here from District 14 down into District 13. There's, I think, 117 or 18 people in this area here. And then in both plans, it brings this area mostly bounded by Baya out of District 14 and gives it into District 10. So both plans have those common features. What's different about the plans is in Plan, in Alternative Number One, this area here, which is just north of this recreational complex, this is a one large census block here, and there's some other blocks that, this comes down into District 14. The alternative plan, Alternative Two, leaves this area unchanged, but moves, beginning right around here, all the way to the westernmost part of the city, moves all of that population into District 14. So it looks like, like this. This is, in Alternative Number One, this large census block here, these are golf courses here, nobody lives here. There's some other population up here, I believe. And in a little while, we'll get to the software, where we can show you in detail how, how many people live there. But this area here, with the diagonal lines, comes from District 13 into District 14. In Alternative Two, we leave this boundary unchanged, but all of this area here to the west comes into District 14. Now, you might ask, why is this line here like this? But yet, there's this one census block like this. Sometimes, the Census Bureau will change the shape of blocks from decade to decade. And this is common in this process. I think, though, in the case of Lake City, these splits here, and we can show this better when we get into the software, are due to how the districts were drawn in the past. And it, it seems as though they really didn't follow census blocks. But in all of our plans, we are going to follow census blocks and use total population. And just so you know, in, this is an example here, and there's, there's one up in District 10 as well. When you look at an aerial photograph of this area, the southern half of this block is all parks and recreational facilities. The northern half is where there's population. And so in our process, when we looked at the existing district's map and the existing district's data, we moved all of that population into District 13. That's where they really live, under the current maps. So just, so you know how we did that. But with any, any block, any block that was split by a district boundary, we manually looked at it through aerial photographs, satellite photographs, and made a determination as to where that population went, just to get to the current district. Moving ahead, we're going to follow census blocks, and then we're not going to be, avoid this problem in the future, hopefully. So this is what got moved from where to where. Under both the plans, that area, that little tip of an area, let's see if I can get through it, right here, in District 14, that was moved out of District 14 into District 13. Then this area here, in the northern area of District 14, was moved into District 10. So 466 people out of 14, 466 into 10. The difference then between the two other plans is that in Alternative Two, where you, we moved that part of the city on the western side, the southwestern side, out of District 13 into 10, that's about 909 people. For Alternative One, it's a little bit more, about 968 people. So that's, that's the difference in terms of data. They look like this. And then the final data is, Alternative One is about a spread of about 5.4 points. Alternative Two, about 7.35. I think these are both legally sufficient plans. To get the spread as close as you can, that's better. But there might be policy decisions, policy considerations that you all have as the legislative body that may want, you may want to think of something else, or give out whatever, have an amendment to one of the plans. Both plans preserve the minority-majority district, and both plans preserve the minority-influence district that currently exists within the city of Lake City. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I want to, I don't know if you want to take questions now, or wait until I jump over to the software, or whatever your pleasure is, Mr. Mayor.
Have I got any questions now?
Sure. Again, I would like to ask a question there. So when you say "we," who's "we"? You say "we" come up with this plan. Who's "we"?
Well, why, based on our, we had individual conversations with all of you, and based on the criteria and the data, we, our agreement with you is that we would come up with two alternative, my company would come up with two alternative plans, which would, they're just drafts. They can be changed. And they're just designed to elicit a reaction from the city council and from members of the public, see if they're, you know, generally going in the right direction, or if you want to take a different approach.
Yes, sir. And my next question is that, if we vote on whatever plan or alternative that you have, how would we, we let the citizens of this community know exactly what district they're in? How would we do that? You know, I, I've had a couple phone calls already about moving out of 14, going to whatever district that they may have to move in. So, and they are not happy with that. You know, you get those phone calls all the time. But I understand, we got to do something to make sure that we're in compliance.
Right. I don't know when the next election cycle is, but once a plan is adopted, you communicate that, put it on your website, you would communicate it to the supervisor elections. There will have to be some adjustments to voter precincts, I believe. So I, I don't know if the elections are in the fall, or sometime next year, but...
Next year.
Next year. So you've, you've got a lot of time to communicate that to people. You know, people don't like getting moved from one place to another, I know that. But the, 55 or 45-point spread is a significant spread, and it's, you're at risk if you don't... Okay. Let me bring up this software here. So this is, this is the software that's used in this process. This is a, this software is commonly used in a lot of different applications in local governments, from 911 to planning, watershed management. It's a geographic information system software. And I'll just give you an example of how it works. This is a, like, the Lake Isabella area, and you can see where this census, this is one census block where it's, it's split by District 14 and District 10. And so here, in this district, there are 39 people who live there. 38 have said, "I'm a white or Caucasian." There are no African-American folks, and there's one person who said, "I'm of another race." In the columns in the spreadsheet that you have been provided with, the columns begin with total numbers for the current districts, with ideal population, the average, using the new numbers. And then there are three columns of information on race, both in terms of numbers and percent. There's white, black, and other. The people included in the column for black are people who have said, "I am a single race, a black person," or "I'm of two racial backgrounds, one of which is black." The people, everybody else is in the other column. And in the census form, there are six or eight categories of race that someone can check off: black, white, Native American, Pacific Islander. Not only are those six categories of race, people can check off multiple categories of each one. So there are hundreds of combinations that people can check off. In addition to that, there is an opportunity, if there's not a race that someone felt that they were, they could manually fill that in with some other race that they identify themselves. But the great majority folks are black or white. Then there's a column on Hispanic in the table. Hispanic is not a race, it's an ethnicity. Although Hispanic, people of Hispanic ethnicities enjoy some of the projections, protections of the Voting Rights Act, and so we list them separately. To total the population of the city and each individual district, you would add other, black and white. If you added Hispanic to that, you'd get a number that's greater than what's really there. Because I might say, "I'm a white person of Hispanic background." Or you might say, "You're an African-American person of Hispanic background." So that's the, that's the data that you see there. And in each census block, one here... This block has a total of 21 people. 19 are white, 2 black. None have said that they are of Hispanic background. So the, and so, you know, blocks, census blocks, sometimes they're block-shaped, but, you know, a lot of times, they're not. You know, they're very different shapes. They follow some geographic features here. And here in this particular block, there is 161 people, 139 white, 12 black, and 10 other. Now, one of those 161 people has said that, "I'm of a Hispanic ethnicity," there. So that's how that, how the data is laid out here. And in the different plans, let's take Alternative One first. The new, the black lines are where the new boundaries are. And so you can see where District 14 was, but this area here now, under this plan, is part of District 13. Now, because of the, the number of pockets of unincorporated area here, we, for this exercise, we sort of put these hashtags here to make this more easily understood as to what area of District 13 was getting moved into District 14. The other alternative moves all of this area, leaves this one census block alone. This has 633 people in it, leaves that untouched, but moves all of this area here, and then all this area here into District 14. So there, you know, I think there, the plans are identical in certain ways, in that we follow this significant boundary. They both move this area, 14 and 13. They both move this area, 14, into District 10. Where they differ is what part of District 13 is going to be moved into District 14. And so the, you're, it's, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Okay, I'll just leave this up in case there are other questions emerge.
I hear you're very good.
As I recall, the, the process now is, after I hear from the council, and then we get input from the public, I will take those recommendations and see if they can work numerically. And then we'll come back to you with other, you know, there might be a Plan 1A, or Plan 2A, or 2B, or something like that, some variations of these.
I have a question. Yeah? So then, Alternative One, is that the lowest, using the census blocks, that you could get the variation? As you work through it?
It's the lowest that we could get using these other criteria, right? If we, it, it's, it's pretty much the lowest we could get. If we want to keep 90 as the major boundary between 12 and 13, and leave 12 unchanged, and if we wanted to take the northern, sort of the northeastern tip of District 14 and move that into, into 10, then it's a, it's a matter of, what do we do between 13 and 14? And Alternative One was, was the closest we could, could get. I was just, before I came over here, I was playing around with Alternative Two. There are, there's one other thing that could be done, Alternative Two, to get that spread down to six something. I can show you what, what that would be.
But still not as low as the 5.4.
It would not be as low as the 5.4. But I, I think they're both legally sufficient, not lawyer, but I think that they are both, they meet all of the common criteria for the redistricting process.
All right. Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Joshua Garner. The question that I was just... The question that I was just going to ask about was, obviously, there was an approval for some other subdevelopments that are, you know, coming. I know we're taking data from two years ago, but are we, you know, can we include some of that data? Because apparently, there's 300-plus homes in one of those areas that's splitting that 13, 14, that we're having the most conflict with at the moment. So I just want to see if we're inclusive of any of that data at this present moment as well. Thank you.
Yeah, you can certainly do that within criteria. We did not consider future growth, but you certainly could do that within the bounds of the criteria that we laid out. So for example, I don't know where this area is, but let's say it was in the, some area of, let's say in District 13. And we knew that District 13 was going to grow much more, much faster than the rest of the city. You could under-populate District 13 because you felt as though it was going to be faster growing to accommodate growth, and so then, at the end of the 10-year cycle, hopefully, you wouldn't be so far a large spread again. But you have to be mindful of that 10-point spread. So you, if District 13 was going to grow, I don't know, you know, 30% faster than the rest of the city, you could not under-populate it by 30 points. You could under-populate like maybe by 9%, and then the other districts could not be more than 1.1% over the average, because then you get the 10-point spread. Or maybe go a little bit more, you know, if you have good documentation, a good sound, well-documented reasons as to why we're doing this, maybe you could exceed 10 points. But you could not match it up with, you know, what an area is projected to grow if it's something like 20% or 30%.
Right. I understand.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Sir, so you're basing this on people and not voters, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm familiar with the charter language, that's, it's people, it's not registered voters.
Mr. Mayor. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, when I, when I look at the different options, and so, and looking at the current option, and, I mean, you have nothing to go by, but the census that we have, I mean, that's just the way that this whole pie works, right?
Right.
So there's no way around that, and he has no other data to pull from other than that particular census. And what we can't do is be God and predict what may or may not happen. And do I agree with Joshua, and it may or may not come as such a decision, right? We don't know whether or not they're going to financially do that. I mean, so we can't project something that's not real, or hadn't taken place yet. So I think the smallest thing to do, at least in my opinion, is go with the lowest possible, which would be alternative one. And that's where the council, and I think Mr. Johnson and Mr. Dow get paid the big bucks to make sure that the city is growing at an equal pace. And I think that's where the council come in. Hey, if there's development going on in 14, and then we need to be encouraging development in 10, we need to be encouraging development in 12, so that our city is growing in an equal way. That makes sense. And so you guys can balance that. I mean, it's not his job to balance that, it's our job as a community, as a council, and as administration to balance that. And that's just my take, and I think we need to get serious about balancing that. I think there needs to be development going on in the city, we need to grow the city. And that's our biggest issue. We're not growing the city, and the county becomes daddy, and we become the churn. But that's what I mean, our folks need to be a growing city equally.
Mr. Dow, did you want to speak?
I wanted to say this, I just asked a question. I was, they look, probably jumps out in 10, and then-
Just going about guns one?
Right here? Yes, yes, what is that? Census, where is that?
Well-
Yeah, right, well, you have to, no, the brown.
Right, I understand. This is Jacksonville Loop, this is-
Lowmore?
Okay, I know where that is, I don't worry about it.
And this is Block 2006. You need to be careful about the blocks, the, their blocks are organized in groups of larger, that are called tracks, and there are several blocks in a track. And so, there could be three or four tracks that have census block 2006 in it. So there, you know, that block number could be replicated a few different times, but you need to, if you look at this number here, this is the total nomenclature for this particular block. 12 is the state of Florida, 23 is Columbia County, then we get down to the track number and the block number. So all of those combined are these specific ID for this particular block.
Well, Mr. Mayor, having been involved in a number of redistricting efforts, it appears that they've done a very decent job. I was concerned after the last census that the council paid more attention to voters, present the voters. If I had been around Lake City during that time, I would have been adding the polls there, because that's just not the way it's supposed to do. You know, it's the person, office responsibility to get you registered to vote, not to do it around the voters. So I'm glad to see that they stuck the population, and I'm glad to see that it not changed the dynamics that much. They haven't redistricted because of the growth cap. And the fact of the matter is that we lost voters in District 10. There's not a whole lot of building going on in District 10, there's some, but people moving out of District 10 into other areas. And so you got to follow that population, you know. I heard councilman Jerick say that somebody want to move, well, that's the call, it's time gone, you know. You live where you live. You can't draw a decision around a person's desire, you got to be done according to the charter. So I'm with Mr. Wong, I don't know, it's your decision, but I think alternative one would look the best to me. It's going to affect the district I live around with. I think the council, councilwoman, young, this is going to remain pretty much the same in terms of percentage, but the hill is going to change. But the issue is, you got all these people in 13 and 14, they got to go somewhere. It'd be unfair for, she's having a small amount of people, you have a large amount of people, that's just not how it's supposed to be. So chances you are, you got two good chances, I think, and I would suggest that one is the best choice.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So one thing that I think would help, speaking of some of the issues brought up, an annexation, we can annex in all corners of the city, sign with annex, we don't have to just do one annexation at a time. So staff could, we could be annexing on the west side, the east side, the north side, all at one time, we can do, which makes sense, because the real way we're going to grow population, if you look at the stagnation of population in the city, is by expanding the border. And if you look at District 10, and even look at the big hole in the middle, I mean, I think one thing, when we meet with the county, we should mention that donut hole that's in District 13 currently, because it's an enclave. And we're looking at annexing right now, the piece in District 12, that little vacant piece, which completely closes off all those donut holes. Now, back in the old days, we'd say, "Hey, so-and-so owns this, they don't want to be in the city, they kept them out." But I think when we talk to the county next week, we should add that to the agenda, and say, "Just close that up by resolution," and all of that could just be closed. And that, it makes sense with first responders, everything we do, I mean, that would be an easy fix. And the other thing is to continually aggressively expand the border. I mean, for tax base, talking about building in District 10, there's a lot of area in 10 that, there's another enclave, several up there, there's, commercial enclaves are interesting, because that's tax base we're losing out on, that really, there's no voters reside in, so that's a concern. But I think you've done a good job drawing these two alternatives. I don't really particularly like either of them, so you must have done a really good job. But explaining the census block, I think that was the one thing in my conversation with you that was very helpful. And to me, it makes sense the way you did it, regardless of the back piece. That one little jut-out piece, south of 90, north of BAYA, the little piece that you're talking about changing, that was moved because Mr. Ward was living in 14 when he ran, then he moved to that little piece there, that's how that got put from 13 to 14 to begin with. It should have never been separated, because it's a natural boundary. As far as the south side park, I mean, you're right, no one lives there, everybody lives north of that, so it just makes sense. I think, I mean, my recommendation would be go with whichever one has the smallest deviation, just to fulfill the numbers.
Anybody have anything? All right. I think very good for the, so you can-
Mayor, what is the consensus of the, so we know how to move forward? Is everyone, we can't take any formal action, but what is the consensus? Is everyone liking alternative one?
I think one is great.
12 is perfect.
I got all of them.
Mr. Jernigan, do you like alternative one or alternative two?
One.
Mr. Hill?
Uh, one.
Mayor?
One.
Same.
One.
One is fine, not much difference. Okay, we have a consensus, so I know we can't take any formal action, but it kind of gives us a direction where we can move forward to the next step now. So it looks like alternative one is the plan to go with. And then we'll bring it back for formal action.
Go ahead.
And Mr. Mayor, so we come back, what were you bringing back? How, does he have a file map? What were you doing with?
We're a little, little ahead of schedule here now. The map, we'll double-check the map, you know, we'll truth the map out manually, but it would basically be this, this one map, unless I'm instructed otherwise, but it'd just be this map. But we'll recheck the data and all that stuff. And then, as the process moves farther along, we will prepare a draft narrative description of each of the districts that'll go with your, I guess, by ordinance, with the ordinance, right.
So President has, so we adjourn.